All right. Welcome, everybody, to the city council meeting for tonight. I will call this meeting to order, and I believe we're going to start with a proclamation from the mayor for Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month.
We might want to start. It's supposed to be up here, but that's where it looks like.
It's up on the thing.
Ah, there it is.
And I think we have some ovarian cancer survivors here tonight. Cheryl Bourne and Janet Scott Nicky.
Let's turn around and face everyone. All right, is this it?
This is it.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much. Welcome to the Homewood City Council meeting. We're going to start off with a proclamation for OBGYN Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas GYN cancer is among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, and more than 110,000 women will be diagnosed, and more than 32,000 women will die from these diseases this year, and the absence they leave in our hearts will be deeply felt forever. And whereas the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation and their Estate of Till Initiative brings awareness of all GYN cancers to the people throughout the state of Alabama, and whereas the good health and well-being of women in the state of Alabama and the city of Homewood are enhanced by increased awareness of GYN cancers and their symptoms and treatments. And whereas it is also crucial that all women in the state of Alabama and the city of Homewood take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with GYN cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examinations so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. And whereas we reflect upon the memory of those lost to these diseases, the bravery of those currently battling these diagnoses, and the need for increased awareness, screening, and research, do that the women of the state of Alabama and the city of Homewood might be spared from them in the future, and encourage all citizens to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers. So now, therefore, I, Scott McBrayer, mayor of the city of Homewood, hereby proclaim September 20 as GYN Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city, and encourage all residents of the city of Homewood, Alabama, to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. And before you clap for these ladies, I'm going to move aside. I just want to say, six months or so ago, my sister was diagnosed with stage III uterine cancer, and I have to tell you, Cheryl, I've thought about all the years we've read this. But until it hits your family, sometimes it's just words on the paper. So I just want to take the opportunity, and gratefully, Kim's doing great. She's cancer-free, and we're blessed, but we need ladies to check all the time for this. Kim was young, and this happens to a lot of young people. So Cheryl, I just want to say, for all the years I've been doing this, you've been so faithful to remind us of this each year. We've got City Hall lit up till for you, and we're just very grateful. And Janet, you as well. Thank you for your commitment. So the city of Homewood is blessed for you ladies being here and continuing to bring awareness to us, and I know that you'll continue to do that in the years to come. So at this point, here to recognize these ladies and the work that they've done to bring awareness to this disease.
And thank you all. And thank you all. We're off now. I just want to give her a go. Oh, okay, wait a minute. Your husband's waiting for our photo op.
And I just wanted to thank Scott and the council all these years for supporting us in this. It is very important, women, know, you know, your bodies. Husbands, sometimes you notice things about your wives. You know, they may have a little thickening or something around their waist, and I know you're scared to say, "Honey, have you gained weight?" But sometimes your pants not even fitting is a sign that you might have ovarian cancer. So ask your wives to look at the signs and symptoms. You can go to the CDC website if you want to, or thinkoflaura.org, and just be aware, because there is not a screening test that's effective for ovarian cancer. And I also want to encourage you to get your children vaccinated for HPV. They found that that causes most cervical cancer, and why not prevent it? So thank you very much. It's been great working with y'all.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
Next, we have -- Chief, do you want to come up and make this announcement, or do you want me to do it?
Sure.
Sure? Okay.
Well, Chief Hill has let us know that there have been a couple of promotions within the fire department. The first is Zan Glover, who was promoted to captain, and the second, and I don't think Zan is here, or I don't see him anywhere. The second is Brandon Broadhead, who is here, has been promoted to battalion chief today. So congratulations to both of you.
All right. So that gets us past the announcements. Next, we'll have the invocation, and I believe Counselor Smith is going to do that for us tonight.
Bow your heads and pray with me, please. God, thank you for this day. Thank you for this time to get together with citizens and the council, and consider all the issues that we're facing in our city. Please be with the city of Homewood. Help us to make good decisions going forward to the future. Look to the future. Help all the people and the citizens of Homewood as we go forward through this interesting fall and this interesting time. Be with all the people who need your love and support. Please be with us as we consider issues tonight. Let us use good judgment and thoughtful processes as we discuss the issues facing our city. Thank you for all the blessings that you give to us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
If everyone faces the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Salter, if you'll call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Waltney.
Here.
Mr. Thames. Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCleskey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Harden.
Here.
And President Wright. You have two accents, but you still have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is the minutes for August 31st, 2020, which I believe have been, already been distributed. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second. So moved by Mr. McCleskey, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and those are passed. Next up, we have some board vacancies that I think are hopefully filling tonight. Ms. Smith, I think you have something about historic.
Actually, I'm going to let Mr. Waltney do the honors on that one.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Yes, we had an opening in the Ward 1 Place 1, or I'm sorry, Ward 1 Historic Preservation Commission, and we had one applicant. The second applicant decided not to apply. So I would like to make the motion to nominate Wes Stevenson for that position.
And I would second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Ms. Salter, if you will let Mr. Stevenson know. And then, I believe, Ms. Andrews, you have a couple of.
I do. With the mayor's approval, I have two new beautification board members, if that's okay. Mayor McBrayer, Lee Lewis, and Ann Damsgaard are replacing two that are stepping down.
Can you send me their names, though?
Yes, I can. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
All right, so we.
Is that a, can I move through that? Yeah, I'll move through.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. McCleskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. If y'all will let, Ms. Salter or Ms. Andrews, see the one, if y'all will let those two people know as well. All right, now we'll get to the main part of the agenda. We've got some additions tonight, since we had committees beforehand. First, to the old business agenda, we will add item 040820, which is a request to consider amendments to the fiscal year 1920 budgets, brought to us by Mr. Burgett, our finance director, and Ms. Salter, our assistant finance director. Next item is 230820, a request to consider updates on West Oxmore Lane rewidening, brought to us by Mr. Pugh and Berkeley Squires. And then last, 110820, request for consideration for additional street lighting and address traffic concerns in Forest Brook and Delrus, brought to us by Mr. Wolverton and Mr. Hamley. We also are going to add one item to the committee referral agenda. This is, we'll go to the finance committee. It's 150920, a report from Meredith Drinon to update on Chamber of Commerce activities that is brought to us by me. And then lastly, two items that will be added to the consent agenda. The first is 010820, request to declare a dead tree at 28 Edgehill Road, a public nuisance. And the second item is 260820, request for citywide neighborhood watch program. I believe that's all the amendments that we have. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with these amendments.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Question real quick.
No, no problem.
I'm sorry. On the committee referral agenda, there seemed to be a lot of city right-of-way work going to the special issues committee versus public works. I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm.
It's.
You see what I'm saying?
I do.
020920, 030920.
Those first three items.
Yeah, I would just, I would think they would probably need to go to public works versus.
I don't think the fence one, would it?
Is there a fence?
There's, the 0309 is permission to build a fireplace. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's all a fault of the backyard.
So you want 0209 and 0409 to go to public works?
Yeah, I just think usually we have this, working in the city right-of-way should be going to public works.
I think certainly 020920 and 040920 should go to.
I know a lot of, we, special issues does, does work.
Well, that's, that's fine.
I mean, I don't.
If you, if you wanted to come to you, that's fine.
I don't, I don't think a new canopy over a dining area and an outdoor fireplace, I don't think anybody would.
They're fighting over the item.
No, I'm just, listen, I just asked a question. Y'all can tell me to hush and move on.
I'll be glad to yield the items to special issues.
Perfect. We'll keep it on special issues.
Yeah, I was trying to say, let's do 020920 to public works. I think 030920 should stay with special issues, and 040920 sort of falls into both a little bit, so I will keep it at special issues. But we'll make that other amendment to 020920 on the committee referral agenda. That item will go to public works.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem at all. All right, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendment, the agenda with the amendments.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the amended, the agenda is amended. And next, we will go to the consent agenda by Mr. Jones.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, next we have the old business agenda, and we'll start with 070820. It's a public hearing set for tonight for consideration of rezoning property at 3019 Firefighter Lane from R5 attached dwelling unit district to R4 attached dwelling unit district. The applicant is Jason Hale of Willow Homes, and Annie May Cooley to permit the development of two separate single-family houses. This item has gone to the planning commission, which issued a eight-to-zero favorable recommendation of the rezone. Mr. Pugh and/or, and/or Mr. Hale. You can come up. Whichever one wants to come up and do the presentation.
We got a report from Ms. Andrews first.
Thank you. We have a report from PND. Ms. Andrews, will you give us that, please?
Yes, the planning development committee met this evening and voted four-to-zero without recommendation per the public hearing. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Jones.
All right.
All right, I'm Jason Hale, 1400 Sutherland Place. I, you know, these lots are currently zoned where they are for apartments and condos, I believe. And the goal here was to step them down one layer in zoning to allow for single-family. Currently, that is not allowed, even though that's pretty much what's on the property now. We are proffering, because it's a little unusual to step down to that zoning to do single-family, but it makes sense on that street because there's not other NPD. So we are proffering that the height restrictions will be consistent with NPD zoning, that the side setbacks of nine feet and five feet for each lot, which is consistent with NPD zoning, would also apply. We will also proffer that front setbacks would be 25 feet, and total lot coverage of no more than 50% of the impermeable surface. So, of impermeable surface. So basically, it'll, you know, these lots, even though they're not NPD, they'll follow the main restrictions that follow with NPD.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. And with that, I will open the public hearing and see if anyone from the public wishes to speak in favor or against this item. Yes, ma'am, you can come on up. Just sign in with Ms. Salter over here.
I am Laura Brazil, B-R-A-S-S-E-A-L-A. And I live at 311 Firefighter Lane. I am for this 150% because I have apartments behind me, beside me. I've been on this street for 50 years. These homes going up is just going to do nothing but improve this street. The State Home across the street is the pain in my left foot. I had to deal with the trash cans and trying to get out of my driveway. They just started leaving them because they're, sorry, too lazy to take them to the back. I would like that moved. But other than just making that whole street breathtaking, I'm for it. It's slowing people down. I've almost got hit twice. My aunt's got hit, almost got hit twice just opening her car door. We have checked to see how fast people are going from one end to the top, 60 miles an hour. It's ridiculous. So I'm all for this slowing people down, putting homes, no more apartments. There's trash in the back. They cleaned it up some, but it still blows into my yard. So I'm picking up trash. So I think it's a wonderful thing for the city, for the street, considering we have enough apartments in Homewood. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or against this item? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from the council.
I'd like to make a comment. It's okay, Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Andrews.
I just want to thank Jason and Willow Homes. You guys did it the right way. Every time somebody comes in front of us and does something the right way, engages with the neighborhood, makes commitments to be respectful of the people who live around them, I just cannot thank you enough. Everyone that I've talked to on Lancaster and Huntington are very much in favor of this. You even got positive press on social media, so that doesn't tell you anything. I don't know what does. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Brazil. I second everything that you have to say, too, and we're just, welcome to Ward 5.
I appreciate it. We tried, and I know we made some mistakes. We didn't have what we did.
No, we're grateful. It looks great. What you've already done looks fabulous, and looking forward to the rest of it. So great job.
All right, any other comments from the council? All right, in that case, Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further amend the ordnance, zoning ordinance, zoning map of the state of Homewood, whereas the planning commission of the city has approved and recommended to the city council that the property described here and be rezoned from its current zoning classification, R5 attached dwellings units, to R4 attached dwelling units. Whereas the city council set a public hearing for tonight, September the 14th, 2030, and is directed to the city clerk to give notice as provided by law. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council as follows, that the following described property, described in Exhibit A, more particularly described with the following street address, 3019 Firefighter Lane, a certain partial ID, be, and the same as hereby, taken out of the current R5 attached dwelling zoning district and rezoned to R4 attached dwelling zoning district, subject to the following conditions proffered voluntarily by the applicant. One, construction on the property shall adhere to the height restrictions within the NPD zoning classification. Two, side setbacks of nine and five feet shall apply to each lot, excuse me. Three, current setback of 25 feet for a total lot coverage of no more than 50% of impervious surface. And four, the lots to be limited to single-family residential use only. Section two, that after the enactment of this ordinance, that the uses permitted by R4 attached dwelling unit district and those proffers set out herein above shall apply to the uses of the property. Section three, that September 14th at 6:00 PM is a time and place for the public hearing of which time a public hearing will be held, and anyone may, all instant parties may appear and be heard. Section four, the clerk is authorized and directed to give notice as required by law. Section five, if any part of provision of ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all other parts provisions of the sections of the ordinance not thereby affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the city council and the mayor or as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. Salter, if you'll give us a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton.
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews.
Yes.
And Mr. Harden.
Yes.
All right. So we have, thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Waltney. Another roll call vote, Ms. Salter, please.
Okay, Mr. Waltney.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton.
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
All right, and that is ordinance 2781. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hale.
Thank you all.
All right, so the next item is 150820, public hearing set for tonight, to consider declaring the property located at 1001 Queensberry Road a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance's 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Mr. Cook.
Oh, yes, this property is owned by Francis Gibbon at 1001 Queensberry Road. A notice was sent out on September, excuse me, let's see, first notice was sent out in July the 2nd. I've had no conversation with Mr. Gibbon, but the backyard was, and the shrubbery in the front of the yard was what was excessively overgrown. The backyard, you can see from the, that's the front of the house. The backyard's pretty much been cleared. It was probably anywhere from knee-deep to waist-high. That's been taken care of, but we still have issues with the shrubbery in the front of the house.
It's the best today?
Yes, it is today.
And so your recommendation is to declare it a nuisance because of the shrubbery in the front, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Excuse me.
Anyone have any questions? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me open the public hearing first. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make in favor or against this matter? All right, seeing there are none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council?
Mr. Cook, do we, do we know if anybody is currently living there?
They are. Mr. Gibbon, I believe, is living there.
And there's zero contact, like, won't answer the door, nothing?
Zero.
Okay.
Do you think he's there, and you're knocking on the door, and he's just not getting it?
I've sent him letters. The car parked out there.
Do we have any indication on his physical or mental health?
No ideas.
Okay.
I would need to declare the property a nuisance.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith. Is there a second? Second from Mr. McCleskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that passes nine to zero, and that is Resolution 2117. All right. Mr. Cook's going to be there for a while.
Yeah. And makes council meeting, too. And then the following as well.
Make yourself comfortable. All right, 160820, public hearing set for tonight to declare, to consider declaring the property located at 602 Shades Creek Parkway a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance's 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Mr. Cook.
Oh, yes, this is a vacant lot that sits across from Brookwood Hospital. It's been vacant for a number of years. The owner is Elvis Kennedy at 2450 North Hampton Drive in Hoover. He did leave me a voicemail last week, end of last week, stating that there's a gas line near the street, and he is waiting on the line locators to mark it before he brings in heavy equipment. And like I say, I sent him notice on October the 19th, and usually line locators take some, probably 24 to 48 hours to locate something, so I don't know.
You said you sent him October or August?
What did I say?
You said October, but.
August, August 19th, I'm sorry. That was when the first letter went out.
All right.
And all we're asking him to do is not start grading the property, but just to clean it up, aren't we?
Correct.
The neighbors are not happy, we can tell you, being in our ward. And he, you know, it's sold two or three times, as people have tried to do something there.
Right.
We don't know what, do we know his plans to build some?
I mean, zone, zone NPD, so right now, all he can do is build a house.
All right, well, let me go ahead and open the public hearing real quick. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or against this matter? Yes, sir.
I'm Elvis Kennedy, I'm the owner of the lot.
Hold on, Mr. Kennedy, can you come up to the podium here and sign in and?
Is it Elton, E-L-T-O-N?
You drop some.
It was like prison.
Oh, El, okay. That's what I thought he said first, but I wasn't sure. Okay.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, thank you. Just come up to the microphone so that everybody can hear you.
Yeah, so we purchased this lot in, in June of 2019, and then in February, late February, early March of 20, I had the lot cleaned up, and the brush piles you see down at the front of the lot had those. you see down at the front of the lot had those brought down and called for a trash pickup. That never happened, but when we did that lot, when we cleaned it, originally, there was an unmarked gas line down near the edge of the street that we actually hit with a bush hog, had active gas, had to get the fire department to respond and get the line shut off, spire came out. They were supposed to come out and re-market with a state, and that hasn't happened yet. But when I got the notice on the nineteenth, I called the builder and architect that we're in negotiations with, and that's who actually called for the line locate, and they're going to go ahead and clean it up as soon as they get it.
Do you know if they've actually called for the line locator?
I talked to Chris this morning, and he said he did call.
Because like he said, usually they come out pretty quickly, because that's an important thing for them.
Yeah.
The spires in our neighborhood right this minute, like every day.
Yeah. The problem, Ms. Kennedy, is that the neighbors are complaining.
Okay.
So, what we need is that, some progress to be made somehow to get it cleaned up. I understand you're, you're starting to break ground, is that the idea? Have you gone for a building permit? Are you at that point?
No, no, we're at the design, we're still in the design phase. I'm working with CAI here in Homewood, and so they were, they told me when I got the message on the nineteenth, that they would get it taken care of, so.
Well, let me just ask this question. Are you, is there cleanup that can be done without hitting the gas line, or are you saying whatever cleanup needs to be done is going to, you're, is contingent upon hitting the gas line?
So, we could, we, well, two things need to happen. One thing is to get it cleaned up to look and good where neighbors won't be complaining. I need the trash pickup for the burst that's down at the easement, and then I can get in there with a walk-behind brush cutter and knock the weeds down and clean it up. But, we're actually gonna, according to CAI, they're gonna go ahead and get started on what, what they can do very soon.
Okay, because I guess what I'm confused about, and Mr. Cook, maybe you can answer this, is we don't need an architect to get a yard cleaned up?
Correct.
Correct? I mean, what you're talking about needing to be done has nothing to do with an architect?
Correct.
Yeah.
And just while we're on this, there are two lots there, so the next one on the agenda is also, so we're talking about the same area.
Got it.
Ms. Kennedy, you own both of them, or just one?
No, we own both of them.
Okay.
So, I mean, as far, as far as brush goes, I mean, I can have that picked up tomorrow, but I don't see where that's a problem getting around and getting on to clean up. If the gas line's been found once, I must say, you know, kind of know where it's at, I think.
Yeah, it's still, it's still dangerous, though, and, yeah, we get a lot cleaned up, we can cut the grass.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Andrews?
I have a complaint from six oh eight Shades Creek Parkway, Owen Bradley, that, and Brian, I think you've got those pictures I sent you earlier, he's got, if you'll scroll right there, that's growing over from your lot onto his property. So, I mean, it's, it's, you need to do more than cut the grass, I mean, it's a mess. And then I also have a complaint from Michael and Jordan Cat at seven oh two Devon, they're having sight distance issues coming out onto the lake shore. And then I also have a complaint from Carol Metters, who backs up to the property on the, on the behind. So, it, this is something Council Harden and I knocked on every door in that neighborhood, and it's a constant thing that we're hearing. So, it's, it's something that we need to address.
As far as it's said, we can, we can get it to take care of.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Let me make sure there's no one else to speak to this. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak to this item? All right, let me close, close the public hearing, and Mr. Harden, you can, another question?
I was just gonna say, if we could maybe carry it over for a coup, when do you think you can get to it, to the point where the neighbors are not complaining because things are messy? Is that something in the next week?
I'll get to it this week.
Okay.
I don't think we, you don't ask it, I mean, we just say, here's the date that you have to get it cleaned up, and that should probably be the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So, we will, what we'll do is, we're going to carry this item over to the twenty-eighth, and we expect that it will be cleaned up by that point, if not, the council can take action on it at that time.
Remind me...
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, if, if we rule on it tonight, it's, it's different than condemnation, correct? We, we don't have to wait thirty days?
We don't have to wait.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to double check.
Yeah, no problem. All right. Okay, so with that, we will carry this item over to the twenty-eighth without objection.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kennedy, I want to make sure you understand, we're not going to send any additional notice to you about this property. It will be back on the agenda to be declared a nuisance if it's not cleaned up by the twenty-eighth. Okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, and if you want to just stand right there, we're going to have to go through the next one anyway, even though it's going to be the same thing, because we have a public hearing set for it as well. Seventeen oh eight twenty, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at Shades Creek Parkway. Well, this one doesn't have an address on it, does it? Do we have it?
I think, on the county records, it didn't have one at one time, but I think it's actually six oh two and six oh six, I believe.
Six oh six, okay. Six oh six, Shades Creek Parkway, a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances nineteen-ten and seventeen-fifty excessive growth. Mr. Cook, I'm assuming there's no additional report needed for this?
No.
All right, let me go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm assuming there's not anyone to speak to this item that didn't speak to the first one, but if there is, please let me know. If not, then we'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none, then we will also carry this item over to the twenty-eighth. Same deal as Mr. Kendrick said, no additional notice will be put out, and we would like you to get that cleaned up, and if not, we'll take, the council may well take action on the twenty-eighth. All right, we'll carry that item over as well. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, eighteen oh eight twenty, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at eleven twenty-five Hardwick Lane a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances nineteen-ten and seventeen-fifty excessive growth. Mr. Cook?
Oh, yes, this property is owned by Howard and Chin Hugh at the same address, eleven twenty-five Hardwick Lane. Notices was sent out on, maybe I can get it right this time, July the twenty-fourth. Since then, Mr. Hughes, Mr. and Mrs. Hughes' son, I believe is here, I've spoken to him a couple of times today, and he's got plans on what he's going to be doing to get this property cleaned up. He may want to speak.
All right, let me open the public hearing, and Mr. Hughes, is that Hugh?
Who.
Who?
Who.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Who, if you'll, if you'll come forward, and please sign in on the, at the podium there.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
If you'll just tell us about your plans and whatever else you want to tell us about this.
Yes, so I'm Jason Who, I'm representing my parents, Howard and Chin Hugh. So, right now, we've hired Tranquility Landscaping, and the plan is, is for them to basically destroy or take away all vegetation on the property. And what they're going to do is, on a couple of days, they're going to take a backhoe and just scrape all the bamboo and all the other, other stuff, about a few inches of the topsoil off, and then they will put new soil on, and then they'll resaw the property. So, that was supposed to happen this week, and they said that they were going to start tomorrow, but because of the rain, they may be delayed for additional days. They said the project would take about fifteen days, so if I could just ask for an additional twenty days, just in case.
Let me just check, is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against this item? And I'll close the public hearing and take questions or comments from the council. Mr. Wolverton?
So, I've, I've received complaints about the property, that's partly why it's here, and I do understand that this property is right next door to the one that burned in April of two thousand and nineteen. It did sustain a good bit of damage to the roofline, the siding, and everything else. I noticed that, that some of that stuff got cleaned up, but I just wanted to clarify, your parents are not actually living in the home right now, is that correct?
Not currently, because of their age, I worked for them, so I had to move my, my house currently.
Sure, okay. And then, some, some of the complaints weren't just about the growth, but concerns over the garage being cracked open and rodents and other things, that also go hand in hand with some of the overgrowth, but also the access to the home, so.
Yes, sir.
I just didn't, I just wanted to, I guess, ask real quickly about that as well, if, it's slightly off-topic, but.
Actually, one of the things that I asked last...
Yeah, it's in the picture there, you can see how the garage is cracked up.
Yes, sir. So, well, in regards to the garage also, when they, when they bought in the property back after the, after they finished with the remodeling or rebuilding of the house...
Right.
One of the people put a broken refrigerator in there, and it wouldn't close all the way. So, I'll make sure to get it taken care of. At the same time, I did ask the landscaper, because there's a shed down the back that's full of, like a bit of old junk, that I asked the landscaper to take away.
Okay.
In addition, I've asked him to take those away as well.
Okay.
So, eventually, that will also be taken away during this process where they, where they resaw it and redo everything.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
I would say, I appreciate you coming to us with a plan of action. We appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
It helps to make this process a little bit easier, so thank you.
Well, if there's no objection, what I would suggest is we carry this item over to the twenty-eighth, and hopefully, at least the process, I understand that it may take a little bit longer, but I think we would like to at least know that it's started by the twenty-eighth and that progress is being made, so if you could come back on the twenty-eighth and sort of report to us where we are with it, and then we'll leave the item on the agenda until that time.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Cook will probably be able to provide some updated pictures and that sort of thing, too, so that we'll, we'll all be able to check in on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Who.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so the next item is nineteen oh eight twenty, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at twenty-eight Edge Hill Road a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances nineteen-ten and seventeen-fifty excessive growth. Mr. Cook?
Oh, yes, this was a complicated one. The property once was owned by Mr. Peoples, that lived at that address, John Peoples, lived at twenty-eight Edge Hill Road, since then he passed away. I believe the tax notice now goes to a DNN Properties out of Hoover. I've sent, sent them all the registered letters as well. Pretty much what we have is two issues, yeah. The growth that you see in the far back is, is approaching a ten-foot alley, unimproved alley back there. So, you know, we can do some cleanup, we can get to the alley, we can actually clean up the alley, it's the city property, but I can't, if we clean that up, I can't bill that to the homeowner, okay? And then we have the other issue about the dead tree, that falls under our excessive growth ordinance about dead vegetation. So, by declaring it a public nuisance, we can automatically go in there and, you know, get that tree taken down, probably after this storm, hopefully, nothing happens, and hire somebody to come in there and take care of that, and then we can send in city crews to take care of the little bit remaining on the property.
All right, that, let me open the public hearing, see if anyone would like to speak for or against this item, in case we have a thing up. Yes, ma'am, if you'll just sign in.
All right.
Okay, I'm Diana Kennedy, and I own DNN Properties. I purchased this property at the auction at Jefferson County Tax Auction, and so I have a tax certificate. And after I got the certificate, learned that John Peoples had passed away, and now it has gone into probate. Elizabeth McElroy is the administrator, so she has since then hired a realtor to put a sign on the property for, for sale. And then the next thing, as far as the, the tree goes, what my attorney has advised me is, he says that when I buy a tax certificate, that I'm not allowed to cut timber under the code forty-ten-one-thirty-one. So, I don't have a problem cutting the grass, but I don't know if we need to get the probate court involved, or whose responsibility that may be, especially with the tree.
Have you talked to Beth McElroy?
I have.
She, I've talked with her also.
Okay.
She says she has no problem with anybody cutting a tree down.
Is it...
Did she not tell you that?
No, uh-uh. No, actually, we have not talked about the tree. I talked to her before I knew about the tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've spoken to her about the tree.
Okay, does she want to cut the tree?
She doesn't have any money. The house is for sale by her age.
I don't either.
Well, that's the problem. You bought it at tax rate, but you're responsible for the problem.
Yeah, well...
You take it as you bought it.
Yeah, well, according to the code, though, it says that I cannot cut it.
That, without the owner's permission, that's the estate, Mrs. McElroy has told me very candidly on these two occasions, she has no problem with anybody taking the tree down.
Okay.
Tree's going to have to come down.
Okay.
It is a very dangerous situation with a jointed property.
Mm-huh.
But I'm not trying to give you legal advice. If you talk to someone who considers that to be timber, I might get another opinion, but that's your opinion.
Um, I just didn't know if I would be liable to the estate, you know, if, if I were to do something that says, the code says I'm not allowed to do.
I think if you get the permission of the administrator of the state, you should be well protected about it.
I think if you, I think if you call Ms. McElroy again, she'll probably give you that permission.
At least she, she told me that twice.
Okay, okay. Well, what I would propose is, I've already got arrangements to have the weeds and everything cut, so that's not going to be a problem. The tree was the main concern, so I guess we could have maybe a month to, for me to talk to Ms. McElroy and see if that's...
I don't, I don't think it's going to be a month.
That tree is very, have you been there? It's very dangerous.
I went over there Friday. Yeah, yeah.
I'm not a arborist, but it is a jeopardy to fall on people next door.
Mm-huh.
So, it'd be, make you bigger problems if we don't address the tree.
Right, okay. Well, I would need to talk with Ms. McElroy and, and talk with my attorney, too, because I want to make sure I've got myself covered. I don't want somebody to come back on me later and say, I shouldn't, I didn't have the authority to cut the tree. They say that when you have a tax deed, that you can cut timber, but when you only have a tax certificate, you cannot cut timber.
That is not timber, it's a tree, right?
Yeah.
That's, you refer to that all, refers to timber...
Timber's like a crop.
Correct.
Okay, well, I guess that could be debated.
We'll leave that between you and your lawyer, we're not here to give you legal advice, but the tree has to be addressed.
Okay.
It is a dangerous nuisance.
Well, I'll talk with Ms. McElroy and see what she tells me as far as, if she gives me permission to cut the tree, and then I...
Well, let's, let's do this.
Having talked with Ms. McElroy, I'd recommend we go ahead and find the nuisance.
I agree, I...
And then give you time, you should be able to talk to her tomorrow or the next day. She's certainly typically available, at least when I've called her.
Yeah.
This is an issue for the neighbors, I mean, the neighbors are, we've been talking with them for weeks now.
Have you?
So, this needs to happen, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever we need to do to make this happen.
So, let me do this first, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? All right, then let me go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other comments, Ms. Andrews?
The, the tree needs to go. I mean, everyone in the neighborhood knows it needs to go.
Yeah, I've talked to, I guess it's the people behind it.
Yeah.
And I, I told them, I said, you know, I, I, because that's what I've been told by my attorney is he said, you cannot cut that tree because you only have a certificate. So.
I would need to declare the property a nuisance.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrews.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Ms. Kennedy, it's been declared a nuisance. I would suggest that you get the people out there to clean up the yard and take down the tree and get your permission from Ms. McElroy as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Because the city can come out and will come out and do it if it is not done.
Yeah, I don't want y'all to do it.
We will try to get it scheduled.
Yeah.
Yes.
Storm coming in, yes.
Right, okay.
All right.
Well, we'll do. Thank you so much.
2118.
2118.
Yeah. What's that?
It's just the resolution number of 2118.
So if I got a certain date that I've, like it's a hard deadline or?
Before we get there.
Yeah.
Because I've got a.
Before we get there.
I think if you want to check with Mr. Cook tomorrow, he's going to start trying to schedule that tree. So that, that will, you need to do it before that.
Can you have the best number?
I do.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Just let her know that if the city cuts it, there's additional fees added to that.
Well, I understand that. I've been there that way.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cook, I think we've gotten down to the last one, at least for tonight. 200820, public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at 307 West Glenwood Drive a new, public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth.
Oh, yes, this property is owned by Melissa Peters, 4357 Cliff Road South in Birmingham. Notices were sent out originally on August the 7th. I've had no contact with her whatsoever. The house is vacant. Neighbors are taking care of the front yard, but it's the backyard that you can see that's the big issue there. This is, I know the second time that we've had to address this piece of property.
So are the neighbors mowing the yard for them, basically?
Oh, yeah. It happens on the regular basis.
There's actually more than neighbors is here.
Okay.
But they are, because they're taking care of it or else the front yard would look like the backyard.
There's good people in Homewood.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
I appreciate them doing it.
Absolutely.
They ought to be paid by the owner.
Absolutely.
All right, so let me open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak for or against this item. Yeah, come on up.
Sign your name and address, there, please.
All right, I'm Shannon Jarman. I live at 305 West Glenwood, right next door. And I'm here because I have a question, actually. I kind of feel like we're in a pattern of it's getting so bad in my backyard, I can't sit on my deck, so I call my city council representative. She's great. I get on the agenda. I'm here in front of, or I haven't been here in front of you guys, but someone, usually a neighbor does. The city comes out, cleans it up, we get a bunch of rodents because of the cleanup. And then, and then it grows back again. And it's about an 18-month process where then it's so bad, I can't take it anymore and I call my representative again. So my question is, can we get on some type of routine maintenance? Every three months, the city cleans it up and sends her the bill. Because it's, to my knowledge, she pays it every time, Dr. Peters.
Yes, she does.
Instead of me doing the 18-month, coming to you guys every time. And maybe that's not an option, but that's my question.
Do you know her plans for that property?
She has no plans for that property.
She what?
There are no plans for that property, as far as we can tell.
I didn't hear the question.
What her plans are for the property, is she?
No, it's been vacant, give or take maybe 12 years and.
There's still furniture in it.
Is it her family?
There are a lot of, a lot of cats that live in the house.
Right now?
A lot of rodents. There, the weeds are just as tall as the house. And my husband, with her permission, has gone along her side of the fence and tried to keep some of that back away from our property. But you can't, I mean, they're standing water. The mosquitoes are terrible, mosquitoes are bad.
Is this her family property?
It's hers. She's, she lives now in Forest Park.
Yes.
Wyatt, question. Because we've, we've talked about this house because the house is also accessible and in the past has had open doors and such.
Right.
I can't remember, is this on the actual abatement board?
It was actually discussed at the abatement board last week.
Okay.
Two weeks ago. And I, I did not know about cats living in the house. Is that, that's an actual thing?
The back door is open and if you look inside, there is just animal.
Yeah.
You can imagine.
I don't think any of the abatement board members knew that there were actual cats living in the house.
Well, and I mean, that, that door has been open for.
Years?
Years, years. Like, so people have been in there too. I mean, not like living, but hanging out.
Party.
What, yes, whatever you might do in an empty house.
They voted to carry that item over until our October 14th meeting to gather some more information. Possibly you could come and speak to them at October 14th meeting? Or, sir?
Or, or over Zoom? I mean, I don't, I can't speak to her, but.
Yeah, it'll be Zoom accessible as well. And if not, just maybe send me an email or a letter explaining.
I don't even know who you are.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, I brought him up.
Give him a card.
That's why he's the, he's the head of our.
Are you from the city?
Yes, yes.
Hey, hi, I'm Wyatt. I'm the director of the building department. So, yes, we have an, an abatement board and they look at houses that, and they meet and they discuss the condition of them. And if they're bad enough, they vote for us to send them a notice of unsafe structure. And that actually puts, puts the ball in the court of the homeowner to actually do something, gives them a time limit. If they don't do it, then it comes here to council where it could possibly be pronounced a public nuisance and could be demolished.
Basically, what, what we're talking about is a separate process from what we're dealing with tonight that deals with the actual structure as opposed to the yard.
Yeah.
And if there are cats and other animals living in the house, then it, it may rise to the level of, of needing to deal with the structure as well as the yard. And it's currently before the abatement board which starts that process.
Okay.
And so if he, if Mr. Pugh has some, has the information you're talking about, the abatement board would probably like to hear that as they make a decision about whether or not to push this house, this structure through that process.
And oftentimes, Shannon, what we have seen in these circumstances, when a house actually goes in front of the abatement board and is declared a nuisance, which means they have 30 days to respond or the house is demolished and they pay for it, we pay for it and then they, there's a lien put on the property. That often might trigger people to act because otherwise there's property that's valuable is now gone. So a lot of times we see that that encourages people to actually do something with the property. We've had that happen in multiple cases in Ward 4 already. Two houses in particular I can think of that the owners finally did sell or renovated the houses.
Well, I, I don't care if she sells the house or not.
Yeah.
I mean, it's her property, she pays the taxes on it, to my knowledge. I just want the yard cleaned up.
Yeah. But we also can't have it unsafe. It's also not safe, like for instance, you have a young son.
Yeah.
We wouldn't want him to go try to explore inside the house and it'd be a dangerous situation. So that's the other part of it, is that we don't want a dangerous situation, our house that's open where people can access it or you have lots of animals living in it.
But to also bring it back, because I don't know that we answered your last direct question, which is, can we, can we have a prearranged?
Yes.
Every three months? My understanding is no, unfortunately, it has to go through the same process every time.
Legally, legally, we have to take the steps through this, through this process.
We'd love to do it the way you see it.
We, we would love to do it that way, not just with this yard, but with some others. But legally, it has to go through this process. And, and if the yard gets bad enough, maybe we can catch it a little bit earlier, if you can help us know when that is. But, but legally, it's got to go through the same process that we're going through. Mr. Jones, did you have something?
Yeah, that was my comment to address the question that you had.
And I think.
We have the same properties come back all the time.
Time and time again.
And it's really unfortunate.
And I think it's fair to say that if your tolerance threshold lowers, that this property could have been reported much sooner and so we could hopefully do it more often than 18 months if it's needed.
Suggestion to me is I just need to be more proactive and contact my city council representative more often.
This, these.
We'll put it up on the list.
These are complaint driven.
I mean.
It's in the bag because the neighbors do front it, which I'm grateful for. It looks good.
Unfortunately, most of these are, almost all of them are complaint driven, so.
Well, this one, this one's a multiple. I can't say, trust me, Shannon, and they.
I understand.
They didn't touch early. It just takes time.
But, but are you saying that she, that she doesn't have the house secure? She's got furniture and stuff in there and I could walk in that house tomorrow? And there's no locks, there's no.
Correct.
And does she, do y'all have any communication with her at all?
Surely, yeah, she has a cell phone number and the few times we've contacted her, she's answered and been very responsive and if she offers to pay for anything, I mean. Except for.
So she, what she did is.
Except for regular maintenance.
She moved, but she left a storage locker there, basically. She's storing some stuff there, but never took it with her.
It may be more complicated than that, but. But.
Never mind.
Let me, let me check and make sure. Is anyone else here to speak for or against this item? All right, then I'll close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions from council?
I would need to declare the process, I mean, the property a nuisance.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is declared a nuisance and that's Resolution 2119. All right, next item, and thank you, Mr. Cook. We appreciate all of that. Next item, 060820, requests for consideration to add a street light at Pointziana and Hermosa, brought to us by Ms. Andrews. And I believe we have, this was already recommended for approval by Public Works, so I think we have a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, the Finance Committee met tonight and voted four to zero to recommend approving this item. It's $367.92 coming out of seven cent gas tax.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion from Finance. Are there any other comments? All right, then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes nine to zero and is 20 dash 120. All right, next item, 130820, request for consideration of potential partial refunding of 2012 and 2016 warrants as authorized by Resolution Number 20-50, adopted March 30, 2020, brought by Council President Wright and Mayor McPrayer. We're going to carry this item over without objection tonight. We did have the bond rating calls today, so we should hopefully be ready next meeting. So we'll carry this over tonight. Next item, 040820, request to consider amendments to fiscal year 1920 budgets, brought to us by Robert Brigette, Finance Director, Assistant City Clerk, Melody Salter, City Clerk, Assistant Finance Director. And we have a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted four to zero to approve these amendments for the 1920 budget.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that passes nine to zero. So that is 20 dash 121. All right, next item, 110820, request for consideration for additional street lighting and address traffic concerns in Forest Brook Drive and Delcris from Counselor Wolverton and Randy Hamley. We have a report, I believe we have two reports tonight. We'll start with a report from Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. According to Randy Hamley with the Traffic Maintenance Division, there were several dark sections that needed to be added, lights needed to be added to, along with one post. I believe Mr. Jones committed, the Finance Committee would give you the dollar figure, but the Public Safety Committee voted four to zero to approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCloskey. And then a report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted four to zero to approve this item. I did want to ask Ms. Salter, I had written down 999, was it 990?
999.
Okay, okay. It's 99912 is the annual amount coming out of seven cent gas tax. So I just wanted to verify that number. So, yeah, that, that's what we approved in Finance, four to zero.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that will be 20 dash 122.
I'll pick someone to back up the minutes.
It's okay. You did great.
We're in a rush.
Just one number, one number.
Next item is 230820, request to consider updates on West Oxmore Lane rewinding for Mr. Pugh and Berkeley Squires. And this was discussed earlier tonight at Finance, and I believe you have a report, Mr. Jones?
It's kind of a long report. So we, we had the, the report from Doug Peterson at Gonzales Strength. And this goes back, as you know, pretty far. So we looked at the scaled down version. The, the recommendation from Finance is that we carry this item over for additional information and then we send it to budget hearings and accept the report. Four to zero was the vote.
All right, so as I understand it, we don't need to take any action here tonight. We just need to accept, accept the report.
That, that's correct. And we're sending it to budget hearings to look at the, the right-of-way acquisition, which would occur in this next fiscal year. We have to, we just need to gather more information. Mr. Pugh is working on that with Mr. Peterson. So, yeah, it would just be a report.
Okay.
Accepting the report.
All right, well, we will accept that then and look forward to the new information. All right, and that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that brings us to other new business. 070920, request for consideration of an ordinance providing for the appointment, notification and compensation of officers, poll workers for the 2020 runoff municipal election and to repeal ordinance number 2776. As I understand it, this is just about putting the new names for the runoff into the ordinance.
Would you move to approve?
Well, we got to have first reading first, but, but I appreciate your enthusiasm. I was about to say, if there was anyone, I wasn't expecting to hear that out of. All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you would give us a first reading.
In order to clarify for the appointment, notification and compensation, there's officers to hold the runoff municipal election to be held on October 6th, 2020. And it sets out the poll workers for each of the wards. There is a provision that repealed the previous ordinance that appointed election officials for the municipal election on August the 25th and the runoff. Certain of the members that were appointed then can't serve for the runoff, so we're adopting a new ordinance for the runoff only. And Ms. Salter can speak to it, but she's acquired the names of qualified individuals who can hold the election based on the previous training that they've received. So this is what the ordinance does, simply provides that the person who's named in this ordinance will be the election officials to hold the runoff election, provides for their compensation, provides for the publication and training if they've not received training. I think most of these folks have already been trained, which is a plus for them. I think most of these folks have already been trained, which is a plus for them, and they have experience running county and other elections. So, that is the summary of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I take a motion for unanimous consent.
Some more?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. McCloskey. Ms. Salter, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Harden?
Yes.
All right, so now I'd entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance.
Some more?
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. McCloskey. Salter, another roll call, please.
And please, please, give me a favoritiv vote, because this has been so difficult. You have no idea. Preparing a budget is not this hard. Okay, Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
All right, I believe that is ordinance number 2782.
Yes.
All right, next item, 08-09-20, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 2600 B. M. Montgomery Street a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. We will set that public hearing for our next meeting, September 28, at 6:00 p.m. Got another, we got a whole series of these, I believe. So, 09-09-20, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 2900 16th Place South a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. That will also be set for September 28, at 6:00 p.m. 10-09-20, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 909 Forest Drive South a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. This one will also be set for September 28, at 6:00 p.m. 11-09-20, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 238 West Valley Avenue a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth.
Good news, we can take that one off the agenda.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cook. So that one can be dropped?
Correct.
11-09-20, correct, Mr. Cook?
Correct.
Okay.
11-09-20?
We do need a motion.
Motion draw?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
That item is dropped, so the public hearing will not be set. 12-09-20, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1605 Wellington View Road a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Are you about to tell us something, or are you just still standing up there? Okay.
He's watching right.
All right. That one will also be set for a public hearing on September 28, at 6:00 p.m. All right. 13-09-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign Aldott agreement for Greens Springs Highway streetscape, Phase 2 sidewalk streetscapes from Valley Avenue to 16th Street South. This is part of the Greens Springs revitalization and is the contract that Aldott requires, as I understand it. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCloskey, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is Resolution, what am I, 20-123? All right, 14-09-20, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of September 1, 2020 through September 14, 2020. Who was that? Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, I did come in, I did do this.
I was here, I verified.
Yeah, I was here, yes, she was. Ms. Salter was here working hard and was able to immediately address at least one of my questions. Actually, I found the answer to my first question myself about an hour after I found the question. But I have gone through all the questions I had and have been informed of the answers, so I would move approval of this item. All right, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 20-124.
And Dr. Jones, I did give him the good news when he was here this weekend, that he didn't have to do October because they were coming to you on October for the horrible fiscal year where you do two at one time. How many is that?
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes, sir.
Could I raise a question?
Yes.
One of the committee referral items, 04-09-20, deals with 709 Oxmore Road. One of the requests deals with assigned variance, and I didn't know if you wanted to publish a public...
A public hearing for that?
So...
How far, when would be the earliest we could set that?
You could do it at the next meeting if you choose to do that. That's certainly up to y'all.
Okay. Well, why don't we go ahead and set, Ms. Smith, I'm assuming that's fine with you, since you're the, it's coming to your committee. We'll go ahead and set the...
Sign ordinance.
Sign ordinance.
Sign variance.
Sign ordinance variance. We'll set that for a public hearing for the 28th at 6:00 p.m. as well.
Sorry.
No, thank you for catching that. I appreciate it. All right, and I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda. So we'll move on into announcements. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything tonight?
You do want to go over the...
Okay. Mr. Gualtney?
Councilman, how long will you need?
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five? All sets, all works for five forty-five.
And this is for next Monday, correct?
Yes, that's right.
That's for the 21st?
21st.
Probably a little bit late, but, you know, you remind me, Ms. Salter, to, again, thank you, Mr. Brigette, for all of your hard work in the last year. I know we tried to counsel you, it seems like it's, you know, obviously not, but, you know, thank you for what you got, Hugh and Robert did, you know, getting jumping into budget hearings out of that.
Oh, thanks.
That's the people we have in the city.
Thank you so much, that means a lot.
That's it.
All right, Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just echo Mr. Gualtney's comments and say the fact that when I came up here Saturday to do the bills, that Ms. Salter was up here working Saturday, when I got here and when I left, sort of speaks for itself, so...
And Brigette was here too. He was just on down on his end, so...
I will believe that that is absolutely accurate. I did not see him personally, but I could feel his spirit, so thank them for all their hard work.
Yes, sir, Mr. Higginbotham? I mean, Mr. Gualtney, sorry?
I'll go ahead and ask.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Wolverton?
I just wanted to start with a thank you to everybody for the lighting item tonight. I think that that's going to be a tremendous help to a bunch of neighbors up there, and especially now that we have converted to LEDs, it will be even more helpful. So, I know that there are other items, sidewalks being specific to that part of the ward, that are important to them as well, but in the meantime, knowing that that's a long process that we have been moving through, that this is something in the more immediate future that we can go ahead and move forward on and help increase safety up there. I really, I think that's it. Just a big thank you to everybody for the support on that. I know the residents will appreciate it as well, so have a great night.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McCloskey?
Looking over the planning and development committee agenda, there's three items up here, and I know you mentioned the rest will be ready, should be ready, so we need, what, should we do 30 minutes or 15, is that good? Okay, so we'll do, I'll let, we'll set bids for about, six, four.
Six, four.
And I will do the public safety at six fifteen, and this, I think, probably 15 minutes. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Did you skip, did you pass? No, I thought...
I caught him off.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, perfect. Who do you think I am, Mr. Wright?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's a good point. That's a really good point. Well, I want to make a comment on what Mr. Gualtney said. He said he feels like it's almost over. It's not over in budget hearings. We are in the thick of it right now.
We're running behind.
This is exciting stuff. So we're meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow really, at 4:00, and then Thursday at 4:00, and then next Tuesday and Thursday. So we have a lot, a lot more fun to be had by all. So, thank you for all your work, Mr. Brigette and Ms. Salter, on all the work that has been put in, and I know there's going to be more, but I appreciate everything. And then we still need to be vigilant as a city about expenses, anything we can do between now and the end of the year to, you know, we want to end strong here, so let's be vigilant with our budget closing out the year. So, that's all I have. So Finance will be at 5, and we do need 45 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'll set special issues for 6:30, and really, the only announcement I wanted to make is that Mr. Wright's not here tonight, but his lovely daughter, McKeever, was elected homecoming queen this past weekend, so she was very excited. Unfortunately, they did not get to do all the fun homecoming...
Did they?
No, no, they didn't. Don't bring that up. But anyway, she's still, regardless of that, she had the, you know, the virtual tiara. So she was elected homecoming queen, it was very exciting for her. That's it.
Ms. Andrus?
Wanted to also say congrats to Hardy for being nominated for Mr. Homewood, so I couldn't think of a more deserving young man than that. You all may have noticed, we started working on our tunnel yesterday, the Shades Kahaba Tunnel, so we are, Lisa Holland is the art teacher at Shades Kahaba, and so we met yesterday morning and primed the first third, you know, entering from the school down into the tunnel, and then we will be continuing on with that work, but it's going to be a several-month process, it's going to take a couple months to get everything done, but we're going to have the Shades Kahaba Way going down into the tunnel, and then there'll be a skyline once you get inside the tunnel of Homewood, different iconic areas of Homewood, and then there'll be a Shades Kahaba Owl as you come out to the pigs. So it's going to be, I know, I'm really excited, it's going to be great.